Ready to start. All right, in accordance with Massachusetts Terminal Laws, Chapter forty, now this is planning board, May twenty-third. Chapter forty, section fifteen C, scenic road law and section two fifty dash twenty-four of the Bolton zoning bylaw on scenic roads. The Towne Bolton Planning Board will hold a public hearing upon the application of trials of Patricia Sandoz, eighty-seven Broad Street, Plainfield, Mass., regarding the proposed removal of a portion of stone wall to construct a driveway for property located at one-twenty minutes north road identified by accessories map of six B parcel sixty-three. Anyone want to come up? So, a few of us went out there. There's no trees affected, but we did see the wall, and it's kind of weird how it's that road grade, but definitely appears to be a wall, so if you just want to talk the street project a little bit.
So, right now, there's the gate that exists is approximately right here. And then, so, the Rosses who are here own the property and who we purchased from, they requested that we put the driveway in the north portion of the property. There's also a rise in the road right here, so it'll actually have the sightline for the north portion of the road will be better from here exiting. You know, where the gate is right now, it's pretty hard to see to the left if you're pulling out from there.
Okay, yeah.
So, I think, you know, this is where their driveway is basically opposite, so we'll keep all the driveways in a similar fashion, also have better sightline both directions for pulling out in the traffic. And then also, just for inclement weather, it'll decrease some of the grade, so if we were pulling straight out here, again, it'd be a lot steeper to get up to road grade.
Is there an existing driveway here?
No.
No.
There's a driveway on the next part, there's a, yeah, there's a gate in the fence and in the wall.
Could you remind me how many, there's three or four lots on this side?
There's three.
There's three, so there's one here, and then there's a back lot that's...
Okay, and so, the one that's here is already built and the driveway's here.
Yeah.
The back lot, what do you envision for that driveway?
It's a shared driveway with the middle lot.
With the house that's currently built?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that opening in the curb cut, so to speak, and the hearing, the scenic road hearing, we went through that before we sold those properties, that lot, because we knew we'd have to have a shared driveway, because that's one of the rules and regs.
Yeah.
So, we sorted that one out, so they've done their driveway, and the other lot will go in behind that current house.
No worries, I'm deciding the lot on...
On the first...
So, what is the plan to take a portion of the stone down there to allow the driveway opening there?
Yeah.
And will you, what would you do with those stones?
Ultimately, our plan is to fill it, yeah, to fill in that opening. We don't need to.
Okay.
I don't know if there's actually enough stone here left, because it is broken down and kind of...
But at least to put as many as you need.
Yep.
That's pretty much what we asked, is to leave it on property.
Is there a difference in height around here to where the road is?
So, this is going to be two oh four here. So, this is the highest portion of the property.
Okay.
And then, that's the highest point on the road as well.
Okay.
Does it start to go downhill after this? Like, does it start to go downhill?
So, it probably crests like here, the next driveway, but it's pretty close after that.
Okay, and then it goes to...
No.
I don't know, I think the biggest thing, I think, was just making sure that, you know, stones in the wall stay, you know, on site, which is usually a fairly standard requirement, but...
I mean, other than say the hearing and not have anybody surprised, then...
Sure. Surprise nothing, so...
Yeah, exactly, yeah. She could tell us the history of all the stones that were...
I think when we went up there, we saw there were stones, and just to be uniform, because if we don't do the hearing, then somebody else...
Sure.
Yeah, I kind of thought it was probably, originally was a real wall, and when they took the road, they just kind of cut from one side and filled in against the wall, and kind of just kind of took it from there, but, you know. They're not really historical, so I don't know what that...
We've maintained it on our side of the street.
Right.
Seven hundred feet that we still own, and we love stone walls, so I'm really very pleased that the plan is to take the stones out of A and put them in B.
Yeah.
And that stone wall in front of our property.
Do you envision the third house?
I think they're more than a year away at the moment, very younger couple, I think.
Oh, somebody already bought the lot, though?
Yes, they did. Yeah, they bought it at basically the same time, all three, so separately to essentially own the builders, so they're all, they're now builders themselves, they're all going to develop their own homes on the property.
He's going to be builder by the time we're done, though. All the experience he's getting.
Yeah, well, I love this property.
That's beautiful.
Yeah.
Took us two years to find it, and so when it came up, I was like, we are so all over that. It's beautiful.
Yeah, pretty good trust, okay. So, I guess we just need to close here.
Now, will you close the hearing?
I'll say go.
On favor?
Hi.
Hold on, let me check that. And then, we approve the, the cut in the stone wall, provided the stones stay on the property.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
I think I might need a vote to have you, since we don't have the draft of whatever letter.
Okay.
I think I need a vote just to allow me to just sign it, because I think there needs to be...
I don't think that's a vote, I think usually Erica just asks you if you want to go in, doesn't she?
Well, if she sends out the draft for comment, and then, I guess.
Yeah, usually, usually, if you, I mean, if you draft something up and you send it to us to review, you can, if we individually get back to you that we're good, you can sign it.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, that's fine. Our procedures are a little monkey without...
Our time play.
We're struggling a little. I get it, Ken.
Yeah, so we'll get that signed, and do whatever you're going to do.
Okay.
Just not wish you, if you're going to start working.
So, we actually, we have a foundation permit right now?
Yeah.
So, we actually poured the foundation today.
Oh, great.
And so, we do have equipment on site. Is there a possibility that I can get the permit tomorrow so that I can start cutting in the driveway, because we have equipment on site?
Yeah, let me, so Jenny, well, tomorrow's, no, tomorrow's Thursday.
Yes.
So, she should be there, and, yeah, I should, if they email it out and I don't hear from anybody, I should be able to get it signed or whatever.
We've approved it, can he start work before he's got the paper in hand?
I don't know.
No, yeah, I think that should be done.
Okay, just do it. Perfect. So, yeah, because the equipment's there, and, you know, so they're open to do what they can.
Yeah, just do it, yeah. We've approved it, so, you know, just...
Are you taking the driveway one?
Yeah.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, because he has the equipment there, so he wants to...
Yeah, just go for it.
Okay.
But we'll try to give it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, so, should I be here at night to talk to Jenny tomorrow, or should I just call it throughout the day?
I'll...
Okay.
I'm going to pick it up, too.
So, as long as you guys say it's, I can go ahead.
All right.
Perfect, I do.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming to meet you, too, I knew about my husband like a million times.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
You're so easy. Reorg, I do, we're doing Chairman again, if you guys would have me.
Why would we reorg?
We have to do it.
Oh, we have to reorg.
Just go through the process.
I'm a chair, advice chair.
Yeah, yeah, no, but we're just, oh, well, that's, we did this, because they...
Yeah, that was a...
We do it every year after an election, so...
Okay.
So, unless you guys don't want me, I'd be willing to do it, but for anybody who has any thoughts.
That'd be great.
I nominate Eric.
Second.
Second. All right, thanks. I know Danielle's currently the vice, if you want to stay, you know, stay.
It's all up to you guys, I'm willing to continue, but if someone wants to step in, that's completely fine.
I'm usually here, stuff doesn't usually come into play, but, I don't care, just keep it the same.
Yeah, I nominate Danielle to be second.
Okay, on favor?
Hi.
All right, let me just write that down.
What do they say, that will get here?
Okay, so, let's see, so for Chairman, it was Mike, and then third place was... I switched it up. Briefing town meeting, just put this on here in case we wanted to talk about anything. Overlay wise, I think there's definitely, it's unfortunate I failed, but I definitely think there's some easy tweaks, and I also think that things just need to sink in, because I even...
I think the more we bring it up, the more we talk about it, people might get a little bit...
Less scared of it.
Less scared of, and I think if we could come up with some additional research of, I mean, we kept talking about additional towns and stuff like that, so maybe if we have a little bit more neighborhood research, that might be...
I mean, the density thing seems to scare people more than...
I know.
Well, because the only thing they've got to compare against is sugar road.
Yeah.
Well, but, we didn't talk about pond side enough, I guess. One guy got up and talked from there, but like, he didn't...
I think if we could have some positive, maybe use some positive pictures of areas where it's worked, where we liked, like in neighboring towns, you know what I mean? And even show them, and just say, you know what, this is in Hudson, this is, or wherever, and that just might help sell it a little bit, but it was a little odd, because there was, I guess you expect this at town meeting, you know, you've got conflicting reports of, you know, all of the services and the demands and everything that, you know, an over fifty-five is going to be...
Yeah, I don't...
But, it's like, we have no housing for people over fifty-five, so, I mean, they're fighting both arguments, and I'm like, you can't...
I didn't buy the argument.
It's kind of irrational fears, I think.
Yeah.
Like substantially reuse services, I don't buy that, maybe we can find some data, but I don't know.
Well, and I think that's where if we can answer a couple of those, that I thought weren't really...
I guess, you know, we should have had like an official something from the fire and police saying that it's not...
When else have we ever had anything like that for any reason? So, I mean, you could just never guess what...
And I think it didn't sink into people that we were, you know, I think maybe some people thought it was a hundred per development.
I think that's exactly what they were thinking, that's exactly...
Well, it could have been, too, that's the, the way it's written, is it could be, so one...
Well, why did they get a hundred, yeah?
Yeah.
So, the question is, do we want to cap it at like forty per development, or would that allay people's fears?
Or fifty or sixty?
I don't know, I think let's do some research around neighboring towns.
Because we felt that there was a natural cap because of this...
Set segment, right?
Yeah.
And I, as it is, I spoke for two hours, I mean, if I started getting into like those things, then I just get way into detail.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I mean, the message is a little bit, you know, were we doing it to, for, to, right opportunities for seniors, were we doing it for taxes, were we doing it for, you know, I think we're kind of a little...
We're a couple of them.
Well, but I don't, but I don't think people...
I think it can be presented better, and we can make some tweaks to it.
Yeah, but let's do it again for next year.
Just let people soak...
You can get it next year, or is it two years?
No, then we can do it.
We know next year.
It's a playboard.
Okay, okay, had to know who the two-year...
That's only if something comes in front of us and we say no, and then it gets voted down at town meeting, then it has to be two years.
Okay, that's just, it's just citizens...
So, we can definitely clean it up, and...
And then, the other thing we do need to consider is the citizens petition of actually putting together for next year.
Of the tier one?
Yeah, a tier one.
Or...
Harvard's passed, they didn't post their results.
I went looking on their website, I didn't see the...
The town then, got it together.
Because Harvard's was a very strict version, outdoor.
And it passed?
Well, I don't know.
Did it?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know.
We couldn't find it on their website.
Okay.
It was a very strict, like, version, outdoor, they have like an agricultural residential zone, I don't know if that's all the residential zone, but, yeah, so...
So, we'll have to do some research, but other than that, I mean, the others passed.
Yeah, yeah, that was pretty awesome. I emailed Kathy Adams, asking, you know, asking if she knew the results, and she said she kept track, and it was really good, and again, I said, you know, please, you know, we don't want her forty B, and she's like, you know, I prefer to do a business development, but she's worried that, you know, saturation in the area, what she's going to be able to get, but she seemed, you know, at least what she's telling me is that...
She'd be open, like we had for some...
Yeah, right, it seems like she has some opportunities now. She's not...
Tranchos, Tranchos.
Whole Foods.
Whole Foods might be, you know...
Close to the Westford one now, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 I work right over those. Is it really that, see, I don't...
I don't think it's that close. I don't go to it, because I think it's too far.
Yeah, like, I work there, and I would go to, but I would go to it from my house.
I never go to Whole Foods, not like that.
I think the other thing we should probably put on the, on the plate for next year is multiple structures.
Well, without a doubt, I almost wanted to amend it, but I didn't want to, I just wanted to get it through, but without a doubt, I want to add multiple structures, because still you have all this space now, it's just one giant building.
Right.
So, I don't even know if we have to define it, just say we allow it to be split up into multiple structures, you know, per plan or whatever.
Yeah, no, I think we should, we should...
Same one that's applied, just say, yeah, multiple structures, yeah.
Without a doubt, we have to have that.
Yep.
I guess, I mean, if we're talking about future potential articles, so I met with David King, who's the owner of the current gas station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Global operates it, so they're like the leasur. So, they came, they showed me a plan, a preliminary plan, it's pretty much a gas station, it's like a river bridge, like gas station, no high-speed eighteen-wheeler pump, it looked really nice, it wasn't just, it wasn't all town, but it wasn't just a box, it was, like, had some architecture to it and stuff.
Did not have the diesel pumps?
No, didn't have that.
Okay, that's, that was a big thing.
It was, it was an eight-pump canopy type thing, though.
Okay, all right.
They were showing in their plans that everything was a hundred and fifty feet back from the road.
Oh, wow.
Because of...
The setback.
The setback, but now, when I told them fifty, they're like, oh, that's awesome, so now they could bring it forward, so they were excited about that. The problem, there's two things, the problem with that, so, four ninety-five, one seventeen, and their property's like here or something like that, the way the business district, I think the way they did it is they said it's so many feet from four ninety-five and so many feet from one seventeen, so that business district actually cuts them in half, and they would want the whole thing to be like there, but you can only build on the business, even though you can use the total acreage for how big of a, you know, coverage, this is going, so that's one thing, I think we need to clean up next year is fix the business zone, the lot lines to actual lots, not just this random square line, because if you, if you look up there, you can see it, it's just like a rectangle.
Yeah, I see that, yep, and so it looks right there.
It looks like it's an angle there.
But if you go look in the GIS now...
No, no, this is, this is the business, right?
Yeah.
So, it's just a rectangle, it's just a direct offset.
But their lot is...
And their lot goes like this.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, why doesn't it just extend to here, or go to the lot?
Well, I think just because whenever they defined it, they just didn't care about lots, they just kind of made some square.
Okay.
So, that's one thing that we, the other, the other issue they have is, we have a lot that only has twenty thousand gallon tanks.
Yeah, and now they want it to go to sixty.
Well, that was for the high student, this would be actually forty, but they can do it with twenty, but then they just require more Phillips, so that's something we can think about.
It's something we should consider, because twenty is really, from what I understand from gas stations, it's just not...
And if you have twenty thousand gallons and some...
Well, and the thing is, if you, if you allow for larger tanks, that means less truck trips to the gas station, I mean, I don't see the downside of...
I mean, he did say that we have some like, you know, small town places where they specify that Phillips have to be between ten and three P M.
Yeah.
So, so he's like, we could do it, but you're just going to have three or four trips.
Yeah, I'd much rather have less trips, you know, allow for the bigger tanks, which are underground, always sees them.
I mean, they would put in, would they put in a new tank either way, a new twenty thousand gallon tank?
Yeah, for sure.
They should, they should, because those tanks are all the old.
Yeah.
But it would...
I don't think they're terribly, I think they've...
When was, oh, did they be doing recently?
Well, I mean, relatively, yeah, probably in the last ten, maybe.
I mean, that's the question, if they, if we could get them, but put in brand new tanks.
But it looked really nice what they did, you know, I asked about, now they're going to be competing, their shop would be competing with Country Covered, and I talked about the accessory festival, and he's like, oh, we actually, this is their small town line or something, what they have is, they have coffee, but it's their own coffee, and they have like a sandwich shop, but it's their own sandwich shop, and then they have like a little patio, they look really nice.
It's going to be tough, I guess, the subway and Dunkin' Donuts is right next to them.
And that's for them to decide.
Yeah.
If they think they can make it work, then...
But if they have like an outdoor patio area, I mean, that, my kids always ask when I go to Subway, hey, can we eat there, I'm like, no, there's no seat. I'm like, where do you want to sit?
You could go back, or I'm backing, sit on the, on the stone wall back there.
Yeah, that's right.
The canopy, a little angle to it, and they like lift it up higher so you can see the building, not just like a structure.
And canopies have been, and canopies have been proposed there in the past, and have obviously been shut down, like, so, or us, or...
Why have they been shut down?
I mean, just, probably particular butter.
Okay.
What did it, I mean...
What is the...
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, I mean, I'm going to need to go back, I mean, I know the gas station...
I mean, if you have a get with your pumps, you have to have a canopy, so...
Not one there now, well, probably the self-serve.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're going to have it as a self-serve, it makes...
I'm just, I just, I mean, I remember it coming up in the past, you know, two or three...
I think...
I would hope, yeah.
Station. I think things are different now, I would think.
And I, I'm just, I mean, it's, it's been a sticking point in the past, but, you know, but if they're okay with it either way, then...
And then, you know, I don't want to get into it tonight, but, you know, the big thing for next year is we have to senior housing and affordable.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that was part of what, I don't know if the overlay had been, you know, hidden structured, so it would have helped with the affordable, if that would have been then...
I don't think we could have done everything with overlay, I think if you're going to do affordable, it needs to be more of, more of like Bolton Country Manor type thing, you know, something like that.
Really, that's, is that senior?
Yeah, it's senior, I'm saying if you want to do a senior affordable, then...
Senior affordable, so you're saying not just affordable.
So, were you on when we did the, when we did the plan for the assisted living, in Bolton Manor? So, yes, so you have Office Park, and you have Bolton Manor, and then in the back, there was going to be an assisted living, and it's already passed two years, but that would be a perfect place for another, you know, if they want, you know, if they want to do that back there.
Yeah, it's a matter of somebody making economic argument to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, of course.
Okay.
So, I think that's it for that, discussed outcome of eternal Century Mill Estates, I mean, so, I called a meeting, because of our last few meetings with Century Mill and how so many, you know, variables to this whole situation, and I didn't feel comfortable at all with us deciding what to do with the road extension. So, I called a meeting, and let's see who was there, it was very well attended, it was me, Stan was here, just going around the table, because we sit on this table, Dawn, Rebecca, who's there, yes, T P W, Joe Lynch.
Yeah, Joe Lynch.
Fire was there.
Fire.
Was a police.
Bill Brookings. No, police wasn't, and Erica, and her baby.
Oh, nice.
So cute. Yeah, she was really good, she was awake the whole time, it was like, five weeks old.
Wow.
And so, man, that's a mess. Joe, you know, Joe was talking about the binder, and it's ravelling, and you can't put top coat on top of it, it needs to be refinished, or he was talking about this, this like chip sealing stuff that you could put on, but, you know...
Oh, God.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah, that's like for patches, though, and fixes.
Well, that's what he's saying, they're really bad areas, maybe you could do that, I don't know, but he said that there's really bad areas, and it's the berms, which you know, then, I haven't heard this before, but where all the sidewalks meet the driveway, it doesn't pass ADA compliance, because it's some like steep up or down or something, so, a lot of...
That'd be much really too smart, little too, but go ahead.
A lot of where those walkways meet the driveways need to be redone, and then you're saying lift it up, so the French drain needs to be lifted up to level or something.
This was Joe saying, right?
Yeah, was Fred there? Fred.
Who was Joe?
He, Joe, Joe Lynch, D P W.
Okay, okay.
Harold, too.
Now, when he says the sidewalks don't meet ADA compliance, in which, in which way? So, I mean, because the sidewalks are allowed to go with the slope of the road, and that can be as steep as it needs to.
But I think it's something to do, I mean, I wish you were there, because you could probably describe that, and we know exactly what they're talking about, but it was something to do about how it meets, it goes up and then down, and there's some steep, you know, to make it work or something, I don't know.
I mean, there's definitely certain slopes, but...
And what he was worried about is that if some action group or somebody says something, and we accept the road, then the town has to pay.
And that we have the liability, absolutely.
Fred would have expected that.
Well, so, we talked to Fred about it, and Fred said that he missed it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so Fred said that he missed it, because actually Joe and Fred went out there, and Fred was on board with Joe's assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think Fred had already, you already knew about the drains and, you know, all that sort of thing, and the berms and all that, so...
Well, the drains was cleaning them up, you're saying that...
Well, no, I think, I think Joe, I think, I think Fred had said that, you know, that they, that they need to raise them before...
I remember there being something for that, yeah, but, but he didn't know it was an ADA compliance issue.
Okay.
So, that's out of spec. Rebecca was very concerned about the crossing in phase three.
Yeah.
All, many of the catch basins have a full silt, and the catch basin down in, the catch basin down in four...
Just so you know, that they are out of compliance with their N D's permit if they To say no, that they are out of compliance with their NITDS permit if they have more sediment in their things than is allowed, so...
Well, I guess the silt sacks, you know, silt sacks froze up in winter.
Then replace them, they need to replace them.
Yeah.
And that's fine, I mean, they, they don't need to have that stuff in during winter construction because it's a frozen ground condition. Typically, you wouldn't have runoff, you know, or sediment going into those, so they could have actually taken those out during winter, and they're actually allowed to take them out during heavy floods.
And that caused the crossing in phase four to clog, so that was all clogged up. We talked a lot about the ownership, which actually that kind of seems like it's getting settled out a little bit. I, the, um, the guy owns National Lumber and the wife's, and they agreed that they're gonna go out to bid for a road.
They're gonna get someone else to, to do it.
They're gonna get a bid.
Okay.
You know, so they're actually kind of, sounds like they're taking responsibility for the road.
Okay.
But, so that's...
Better than trying to get no permit for it.
Yeah, that's good at least. Bill Brookings got a letter from the Mass...
Is it the building inspector?
Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah.
He got a letter from the Mass D.E.P. saying that there's tons of violations with the public water, and that there's like some telephone line that's supposed to be hooked up to the system to report when there's low water or something.
Okay.
Um, and that, now that I've got work up done, there's some pumps, there's a, there's a bunch of pumps that were supposed to be, that haven't been inspected since 2016 or something, or, or there was a bunch of violations. And, uh, they're trying to get a hold of the old Randy Benson, but he's not responsive also.
If they, if they have, I mean, D.E.P. can, you know, issue an enforcement order and basically could potentially shut portions of it down, I mean, if they have, if they're not compliant with their public watch.
Public watch, if it's...
I'll forward, I'll forward it to you, because you would understand it more than me.
I always, I have another project in mind where I've got a D.E.P. on my back for different issues, this is where I knew construction, but...
But it sounds like typical, typical situation, you know, not doing everything it's supposed to be doing.
And I don't think we should be approving anything if, if they're out of compliance and potentially in reforvements.
Right, well, because then do they need to dig anything up, or what?
Yeah, and, and I think, and the other big thing with is the whole, um, ownership of the zone one versus the...
Well, exactly, that came up, right, Andy's like, "Well, it's a conservation, is it ours, is it, you know, that's..."
It's the homeowners, because they need to have access to it to maintain the wells and such, and the rest of the land can go, then nobody else is gonna want their infrastructure on their land.
Bonds came up, so we currently hold on two and four, 250,000, which Joe said that he doesn't think that'll even cover what, you know, the issues he sees, so if, if Andy just left, he doesn't think that the 250 could finish the road, that was his opinion.
10 years ago maybe, but not anymore.
But because there's all these extra things.
Yeah.
We hold 130,000 for the phase, for the phase three crossing, which Rebecca thinks that, you know, based on estimates, whatever, she thinks that would do it. But that's given, I guess Andy had, um, the thing precast at the same time as they did the other one.
Precast culvert or some, or box culvert or something?
Uh, yeah, I think, the culvert, but also I think they might have the pieces for...
Are they rerouted?
For the walls or whatever, I could be wrong. But she was concerned that if Andy leaves, that we'd have a hard time getting that stuff from him. So, in that case, the 130 wouldn't cover, if we could get all the pieces, the 130 would cover it, but if we couldn't, so...
But isn't, I mean, if he leaves, then phase three doesn't get done, right? I mean, we, we effectively pulled the permits up.
Well, right, 'cause he's, he's the...
Phase three is all owned by other people.
Yeah, but he's, but to the town, the covenant, right, so according to the covenant, the covenant, he is the running responsible. So if he leaves, that would have to be redone, it would be like new subdivision.
So, so to your point, and, you know, we tried to say this at that hearing, he is the responsible party, and, you know, so we...
As much as he says no, according to the town, he is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's what I wanted to make sure we got, so town, or whoever all the people are that looked at it, where he is the responsible party.
So, Dave Donnelly, or Dave Connolly, he's the second under chief menzer, I believe, and maybe, maybe he's a candidate, I don't know. But he, uh, they said that, you know, for that big of a development, they'd be inclined to not want to have just one access, they would like a fire access, but because of the way it works, it only makes sense to have a covenant from Century Mill, because it's like Hudson on one side and wetlands, and people's houses and stuff. So it was like, "Well, can we just have a fire access from Century Mill?", which would be just, I don't know, some gravel type road. But Rebecca was against that, because you have runoff and all this stuff.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can't imagine construction being happy with that.
But...
You can, you can do, I mean, I've done fire assistance with like a GeoGrid, where you have grass grow through, so it's, a vehicle can drive over it, but it looks like grass.
Yeah. And, I'm trying to think of everything that came up. He was saying, "Without a doubt, the turnaround at the end of phase two isn't good enough, it would have to be bigger."
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we knew that, we knew that.
Because right now, he said it's like a multi-point turn to turn around, and we were like, "Well, North Woods is a one entrance," but he said that it's kind of a circle, you know, I don't know. So it seems like they might approve it as long as the turnaround gets bigger and stuff.
Approve what?
Phase two and four being accepted.
Oh, so they, so they, okay, so they would be willing to take partial approval of the...
They didn't say anything definitely yet, he went to the chief, but he said, "Without a doubt, the turnaround needs to be bigger."
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there was the question of where does the turnaround go, we would want it out of phase two, because we want to be...
In phase three, yeah.
But then you would need easements from the owners of those lots to put the turnaround, because they would take up a lot of the first four lots.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Unless they get a good bid and decide to put their road in the summer.
See, I mean, it lasted for about an hour, an hour and a half of all these things, and I was like, "I'm not comfortable holding..." You know, they talked about potentially putting a contingency on releasing bonds to and for, to get the other phases started, because they were, seemed a little worried that he gets his money for two and four and just disappears, and things are just left kind of out in the open. So, I don't know, at, at what point would we be wanting bond for, for one and three? Yeah, I mean, I think, I think...
Before anything starts. Before anything starts, so we should be looking for one now.
We must have something, don't we? I mean, they're talking about blasting?
We, only thing off of one and three we have a bond for is, uh, is the crossing.
Is the crossing.
Huh. Yes, so I'm not sure timing-wise when that happens. So, in the end, Erica, Joe, Fred Hamway, and Rebecca are gonna go out there sometime before June 8th, because she's going, Rebecca's going on vacation on June 8th, maybe one or two of us could go as well. I'm not sure when it's gonna happen, so when I find out, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
To go, yeah, to go over, to go over, um, all the stuff Joe has, I mean, Andy's kind of flipped his lid, when he's like, "Oh, you have to redo, you know, this road," because that's not in his plan.
But it shouldn't be a surprise, I mean, he's biggest builder in Massachusetts.
Yeah, he's one of the most house station, oh, yeah. So that was that, that's why I canceled Century Mill tonight, because there was no direction.
No, no, so my only question is, is, um, and Andy made comments several times of...
If I don't get started.
Yeah, if we didn't give him direction by June, you know, he was gonna say, "Well, I can't."
Right, and it sounds like, you know, Joe is saying that he'd be pushing it to get it done by the time, you know. So, I mean, unfortunately, we are holding him up, but I just...
No, that's not...
No, well, no, we're not, I mean, he, I mean, he knows what has to be done for the road to get, to get it...
Well, does, no, so he doesn't, Andy doesn't know yet what has to be done, right?
Well, he was in the meeting, just Fred was there.
Actually, funny enough, Fred Coon showed up, I don't know if you see, but he was like, "Can I sit in?", we're like, "No." So we didn't have him sit in.
Okay.
So we need to give a list of Fred Hamway, Hamway's gonna get...
Fred, uh, he has Fred's list from November, which is still stuff open on that, but this extra stuff that Joe was talking about in the...
We need to get him that information as soon as possible. I mean...
And what did they say about extending road permits, like for...
So, what Erica said is that, um, you know, well, we have to have, town council said, in order for things to be, uh, in order for things to lose, to rescind his covenant, we have to have a public hearing for it. It doesn't just automatically, on June 30th disappear, but she said, "You also don't wanna be working on an expired agreement." So she said, she thinks it would be best until things are solidified, that we just keep giving like a one-month extension.
Okay.
But his, Andy's like, "He can't get financing."
He can't get financing.
That's what she said.
We could do like a three-month.
I don't know, she said, she said you could do a mini, she said you could do a mini extension until, until, it wasn't until work's done, say, say in two and fours, until we have a solid, a resolution of issues.
Punchless and a solid resolution of everything, it's there, yeah.
Yeah, and... And whatever contingencies and whatever, you know.
And, and then, and then when we get some commitments to get the stuff fixed, then, then we can look at...
So I told Andy and Fred that, you know, we'll try to shoot for the 13th, we'll see how the walkthrough goes earlier in June.
So you told them what's happening?
I told them that there were issues, we won't, you know, there's gonna be a meeting, yeah, we just didn't have enough answers and resolution to have that meeting today.
So on the walkthrough, should Andy or Fred Coon be there?
I assume so.
To go through?
Andy will be there, I thought you said, right?
I mean, well, I mean, they'll ask for, I'm sure, whether, I don't know, who knows?
I mean, if possible, if we already can know the issues ahead of time, it'd be good to put those in writing so we could issue them. Almost they are to give, I mean, the sooner we give them this information, you know, the sooner we can say, "Well, we let you know by this date."
Yeah, so, I mean, Joe Lynch just started, what, within the past year, so he's, you know, he's gonna be responsible for the road. Oh, the other thing that came up is, uh, you were always questioning, "Why do the residents care so much?" You know, "Why are they so keen on getting..."
Oh, 'cause they wanna stop paying for services.
Well, but we, you know, we didn't, we just assumed Andy was planning it, but no, Andy's actually...
No, no, the residents are...
Yeah, yeah, he's charging the $2,000 per year fee for keeping, um, and creating some type of, you know, community fund or whatever. And even the residents are like, you know, they're not totally sure where all the money's going, and, and I guess like, a school bus slipped on the ice, and so Joe felt bad, so he went up there and cleaned up the road and sanded it and stuff, like, you know, and it's not his responsibility.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So it was, it's kind of a big mess, and it was really good to get everybody in one room, but no, so those are the next steps. And that's where we are, so we'll see if it's, if it's not settled out by the 13th, then I'll just push it off again. But I don't wanna have a meeting with Andy and Fred here and then end up kind of the same way we ended up last time. I wanna, I wanna have a direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. A plan, a direction, I'd be like, "This is what it is," you know.
This, this is your punch list to get things in order.
Yeah, it would be good if we can to try to get the direction before the 13th, so that way...
Right.
I mean, we've slipped a month, but it's one month, and I think, you know, and then he can...
I'm not sure I would characterize it as we slipped a month, I mean, they know what the, what the...
Yeah, you're right, we, we just...
They do this for looking, they, they know what they, what they need, they also look at and say, "Yeah, this needs to be redone."
He's just like sitting on his hands, us, but probably.
Yeah, I mean, any indication of, of if they got bids on the roads for, for...
I mean, I haven't talked to them.
Okay, for four?
The only thing I heard about bids on roads...
One, for one.
For one.
Well, Fred, Fred did say that they were putting a bid out, I didn't hear that.
No, he said they were putting a bid out like two months ago, and then he even said like before the last meeting, he's like, "Oh, we might have the bids in." When I asked him, he's like, "No, we don't have the bids in."
No, we haven't closed, the, the bid period hasn't closed yet, so...
I mean, usually your bid period's like a month at most.
I'll email and ask him.
Yeah.
That's it, so, you know, hopefully a couple of us can jump in on that.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hey, when it is, if it's like first thing in the morning, or, I don't know, that'd be better.
Um, there were a couple of residents on the E.D.C., I was just talking to them on the side, I was like, "Just to say your expectations, you know, just assume that it's probably not gonna get done this fall." I mean, is it...
Well, it's not that it needed to get, no, it did need to get done this fall, so it can go through everything to go through town meetings, so it's probably...
I said the likely, the chances are very low, so...
I mean, we're pushing, we're trying to...
We'll push, but there's nothing we could do about this, there's just too many open items.
No, you know what, if he really wanted to, he could do it.
He doesn't work with us.
No, bottom line, I, I mean, as a contractor, I've seen what they can do, when they, when they need to get something done, when they have their feet to the fire to, to do stuff, they'll do it, they'll make...
Also, his like plan that he gave us for phase one, I was like, "What, five little points on an Excel sheet?"
Yeah.
I was like, "What kind of plan is that?", you know? I mean, so, a lot of the, I mean, well, I guess, a lot of the residents, you know, are worried, are, I don't know if they're just worried or convinced, but they're convinced that he's gone, he's just trying to get out of there.
Although, isn't he supposed to be building his house, so he's gonna live?
His house is in phase two or four. Well, gone meaning he doesn't want, that's what the residents are convinced, I mean, the town doesn't know that, so, you know. I think that's it.
So what, what happens if he walks?
Uh, it'll be rescinded, I guess, since it's, you know, the covenant and everything is with him.
But then the town, then the roads don't get turned over, or...
Well, whoever owns, what do you mean, well, so we'd have to still, well, the residents are responsible for finishing the road.
Okay.
But we, we have the 250.
Wait, what are you talking, are you talking about two and four or one and three?
Yeah, what are you talking about, one and three?
I'm talking about all of it.
Well, whoever owns the lots.
One and three is easy, right, like, nothing happened there, like, that...
It is what it is, it stays as it is, and...
I think the owners of three, and he presumably sells off one, and those, if they wanna develop that, they need to come back to us for a new covenant.
Yeah, okay, but then for two and four, if he were to walk?
I think, so, the road extension thing, if it doesn't get approved, then eventually that, you know, that would be rescinded. Town council said that like the subdivision special permit doesn't go away, but I assume if the honor goes away, that it's probably, it's probably just like a pre-existing non-conforming, like, if it's not done something with so much timeframe, it probably reverts back to just, I don't know, I have no idea. But as for phases two and four, um, you know, the town has the bond, so we could do whatever we do with that.
So it could be used to potentially finish the stuff.
But if that isn't enough money, then it's not the worst. I mean, because the town's...
I think we'd also have to pay to do the turnaround too, right?
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah, right, so, you know, we have the 250, but what Joe's saying is not enough. So...
I mean, do we, do we increase, I mean, it sounds like we need to, part of it would be increasing the bond at this point.
Well, if there's more work and everybody agrees with, I don't know how that works.
Did they bring that up at all?
No, they, they didn't come up in the meeting.
I mean, we gotta figure out how to protect, you know, the town.
The town, yeah.
Yeah, for intrude with one and three, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one and three with two and four, really, because that's where the residents are, you know.
I mean, if he owns...
Like you said, there's no residents in one and three, so...
Yeah, exactly. But, I mean, can we, can the town take property in one, if, in lieu of money, probably not.
Oh, I don't know.
Probably at least put a lien on it. And I would suspect the owners in two and four would, would bring suit against him for not completing the project.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the town isn't, the town isn't on the hook for anything right now.
Well, but it will be if we wanna...
If we don't accept the road, it's not us, it's a private road.
Yeah, it's all on the, it's all on the residents.
I mean, we have the 250 and bond that we can try to complete the road, but if that's not enough, then the rest of the money is on, it's on the owners, unfortunately.
And what, would they have to pony up the money if they wanted to?
They'd have to, I'd do the same thing, go out to bid to finish the thing and split it up between them.
And then probably file a lawsuit afterwards against Andy for, um, all right, well, let's not go down, let's hope, let's hope that's not, and we're able to move forward.
Were you, were you here for anything or just listening?
I represent some of the owners in the subdivision.
Oh, okay, you have anything to add? Not, he doesn't like the discussion, so...
Just by the art of dealing with stone.
Uh, did we, yeah, did we cover their concerns?
As much as you can, I just, if you have a bad developer, then I guess it doesn't go well.
So the owners are kind of, uh, taking action, it seems, or...
Yeah, I mean, they're sort of...
Trying to protect themselves.
They're hoping he sort of sees the light, and if he wants to have, you know, sort of salvage any value out of this for himself, he'll get a partner maybe, I don't know about the, is there a, I haven't looked at the title in a while, is there a lender involved now? Do you know?
Yeah.
Does he have a mortgage? I have the paperwork from the original covenant, I think that had it on.
I mean, he's definitely working with a banker, you know, he's, he's paying as he goes to build houses, you know, and to build roads, you know, riding the line, it seems, so I assume he has some credit or something. I mean, even for phases one and three, he needed this extension in order to get going with the money for phase one and three, so...
I'll look again, 'cause sometimes, you know, a lender might wanna sort of step in to...
So you, that's pretty much a snapshot of each department of...
Yeah, no, I was thoughtful, I knew a lot of the public records, like the water supply issues, we knew a lot, so... A few people, they're trying to stay together, 'cause I think it would be more efficient if there's a bigger group, but some have sort of gone off, there's a few lawsuits already been filed.
Really?
Yeah.
Around the road or just other things, like related to their houses specifically?
Yeah, mostly the houses, but the road's been brought up, and the, the conduct of the homeowners association...
Andy.
He doesn't, yeah, exactly. There's another LLC, that's the trustee now, that's actually a corporation, that's the...
Did I get that number right, they're all paying 2,000 a year?
There's issues with that, because the bills haven't been consistent, the homeowners association says, you know, you don't get billed before you own a lot, and his company, I think he has a little management group within his company, they've been sending bills to people retroactively to try to collect money for time before they own lots, so, yeah, there's been things like that happening.
Well, the road's there, so I have to, somebody has to pay to plow it, so why not the person who provides it?
So, we're doing what we can.
Yeah, I know, I understand, yeah.
All right, I think that's it, motion two, Gerald. All in favor?
Hi.